I now call the Eastline Zoning Commission regular meeting of March 20th, 2025 to order at 7:28 PM. Could we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its true color, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We'll start with roll call. I'm here. Mr. Peck. Ms. Markovitz.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Ms. Kalal.
Here.
Ms. Jett Harris.
Here.
Our alternates, Mr. Lisca. No. Ms. Sesko. No. Ms. Yuhas. Of course. Always here. Mr. Mahalan had a family emergency late this afternoon. He'll try to get here, but there's no guarantee he'll be here tonight. Ms. Lorco. Thank you for being here. So before we -- oh, Ms. Hardy, are you here tonight? Our ex officio?
No.
Oh, too bad. Okay. Before we start the public hearing tonight, I just would like to clarify, I understand there's been a lot of chatter on social media due to an article that was in the New London Day. Just so you know, we are not voting and the presentation tonight is not on building, a specific building on a specific site. It's a text amendment for rezoning that is townwide, but of course, you're welcome to stay, but I just wanted to kind of clear that up. We will start with the application of Edward M. Casella, Attorney for Pelletier-Niantic CT LLC, for proposed text amendment to include new section 12B SU-EMC, a floating special use district of the Eastline zoning regulations. So first of all, we'll read Mr. Mahalan's memo.
Memo to Eastline Zoning Commission from William Mahalan, zoning official. Read proposed text amendment, new section SU-EMC, floating zone, date March 20th, 2025. The applicant, Pelletier-Niantic LLC, has applied to amend the Eastline zoning regulations to create a new zoning district classification entitled SU-EMC. According to the application, the purpose of the district is to create an opportunity for development for elderly housing, medical and convalescent facilities. At this time, I'd like to briefly address the regulation text amendment process. As the commission is aware, when engaged in evaluating a text amendment, an application is not site-specific. It is only pertinent to the language proposed. During this process, the board is acting in its legislative capacity and may amend its regulations whenever time and experience reasonably indicate the need for a revision. It has the discretion to make reasonable related modifications to a proposal. In the application, the proposed text amendment, which is not a special permit or site plan and therefore not site-specific, the application is proposing site-specific regulations to create a new floating zone. I note that the zoning regs currently have two very specific floating zone regulations. Number one, section 12-SU, special use district, and number two, section 12A, SU-E, special use district, elderly. Both these sections address very different activities. Section 12A was designed solely for senior housing and is age-restricted. Section 12 provides for a large variety of uses and activities. Both sections provide numerous dimensional requirements, site design restrictions, traffic, and many other regulatory requirements. Any proposal for either zone would require a zone change, application, special permit, and site plan review and other evaluations. The Pelletier-Niantic LLC proposal essentially proposes a similar format, however, it includes such uses as elderly housing, medical offices, medical laboratories, urgent care facilities, and ambulance services. It also includes memory care and convalescent homes, see section B, section 12, point B1 of the proposal. The proposed dimensional requirements found in 12B dot 2 provide for a minimum lot size of 30 acres with frontage requirement of not less than 200 feet. The proposing building setbacks are 100 feet from a street and 50 feet from another property line. The setback would function as a 50-foot buffer. The building height would not exceed 50 feet in height. A traffic study is also required. In addition, it is also proposed to add a number of additional controls in section 25.5, the table of minimum controls for specific special permit. These controls require additional standards such as aid restrictions for the assisted living element, living areas, parking, density, municipal and sanitary sewers, and others. The applicant's attorney, Ed Casella, is here and will give a detailed presentation. In conclusion, the commission should carefully evaluate the specific elements of the proposal, focusing on the purpose of the zone, the dimensional requirements, and the proposed standards. The board should consider that, if adopted, the floating zone could be applied for in any zoning district as with the SU and SUE zones. Any future applications under this regulation, we require a public hearing for zone change and special permit plan.
Next, we have a memo from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments.
February 4th, 2025, to Anne Thurlo, Chairman, Zoning Commission, Town of Eastline, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic. Chairman Thurlo, I am writing in response to a quest for intermunicipal referral for the Town of Eastline. The application was received on February 3rd. The application referred to this agency pursuant to section 8-3B of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed amendment seeks to create a floating special use district, SU-EMC, with additional controls. The proposed floating district would create an opportunity for the development of elderly housing, medical facilities, and convalescent facilities. These encouraged types of developments are accompanied by detailed controls and conditions to qualify for the special permit. Based on the review of the material provided, I have determined that the proposed zoning regulation amendment is not likely to have a negative intermunicipal impact. Signed, Dan Robinson.
Okay. Next, we have a memo from Deep.
William Mahalan, zoning official, zoning department, Town of Eastline, Town Hall. Review proposed text amendment for a new subsection 12B SU-EMC for section 25.5, a new floating special use district. Dear Commissioners, thank you for referring the above proposed set to the zoning text amendments for our review and comment. The zoning text amendments include, in this submission to our office, have been proposed by the applicant, Pelletier-Niantic Connecticut LLC. Acting as the commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the proposed set of zoning text amendments for consistency with the policies and standards of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, and we have the following comments for your consideration. The proposed set of zoning text amendments for a new subsection 12B SU-EMC for section 25.5 proposes the establishment of a new floating special use district to allow through a special permit, the development of elderly housing and medical and/or convalescent facilities. The initial parcels of land targeted for the application of this new floating zone are owned by the applicant and are located on Pennsylvania Avenue and Dodge Pond. While we have no coastal management concerns regarding the application of the floating zone on these properties, the proposed zoning text amendments, as written, have the potential to be applied throughout the town on sites that contain coastal flood hazard areas and where said land uses are not currently allowed in various zoning districts. Section 22A-92B2F of the CCMA requires coastal hazard areas to be managed so as to ensure that development proceeds in such a manner that hazards to life and property are minimized. The proposed amendments would potentially increase the development of high-density housing and other medical and specialized resident-type uses for a very vulnerable population within various zoning districts, which raises concerns regarding the potential to increase hazards to life and property during flood events if applied to areas that are delineated as being within FEMA-designated flood hazard areas. In addition, the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, based on their research, recommends future planning, consider that the sea level will be up to 20 inches higher than the national tide datum on Long Island Sound by 2050. Sea level rise in Connecticut, final report, February 2019. Severe storm events are expected to increase with climate change, and with them, flood risk increases as well. Prudent coastal management, planning, development, and zoning recognizes the potential hazards of each coastal site and avoids locating uses and placing people, especially vulnerable populations that might be difficult to evacuate in a predictable, life-threatening, hazardous conditions. Thus, this potential for increased resident-type density for such a vulnerable population in flood zones should be taken into consideration when reviewing these zoning amendments, so as to minimize damage and destruction to life and property. Accordingly, we strongly encourage the commission to consider adding language to the proposed amendments that would limit the application of said text amendments to parcels that are located outside of FEMA-mapped coastal flood hazard areas and known flood-prone areas in the various zoning districts, unless it can be adequately demonstrated that dry egress and access for first responders can be provided during storm events to ensure consistency with section 22A-92B2F of the CCMA. Please be advised that this consistency determination is based on coastal management considerations only and does not necessarily reflect other municipal planning and zoning considerations that may apply. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in section 22A 104E of the Connecticut General Statutes, which requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of a public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for review of the proposed consistency with the policies of section 22A-92 and the criteria of section 22A 102B of the CCMA. Should you have any questions regarding this letter, please feel free to contact me. Karen Michaels, EA, Deep Land and Water Resource Division.
Thank you. And last, we have a memo from our Planning Commission.
March 19th, 2025, to Anne Thurlo, Chairwoman, Eastline Zoning Commission, Town of Eastline. Read the application of Edward M. Casella, Attorney for the Pelletier-Niantic Connecticut LLC, for proposed text amendment to create a new section 12B SU-EMC, a floating special use district with additional controls in section 25.5 of the Eastline zoning regs. Chairman Thurlo, the Eastline Planning Commission, at its March 11th, 2025, unanimously found the above referenced text amendment inconsistent with the 2020 Eastline Plan of Conservation and Development, as it would allow commercial residential uses within a zoning district that only allows single-family housing nearly anywhere in the R40 district on any parcel of 30 acres or more. If you have any questions regarding this letter or the POCD, do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary Gashell, at 860-691-4105. Sincerely, Kirk Scott, Vice Chair of Planning Commission.
Thank you. At this time, would our applicant come up and present your proposal? And if you could state your name and address?
Just give me a minute to get organized here.
Sure.
My name is Edward Casella. I'm an attorney in Old Saybrook, firm of Cludier and Casella, located at 29 Elm Street, Old Saybrook, Connecticut, here representing Pelletier-Niantic LLC with Eric Pelletier. I do have a handout of the presentation materials, if I can.
Thank you. Jessica, do you have these numbered for exhibits?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for reading all of those materials. I'm going to try not to be duplicative in the presentation, but a lot of what I cover was in Bill's memo as well. But, big picture, this is, as stated, an application for a text amendment of the Eastline zoning regulations to create a new floating zone, special use zone, the SU-EMC zone. So what we're going to go through today is a little bit of review of the permitting process, why a text amendment for a special use district is appropriate. We will review briefly a concept application of the text amendment. We'll discuss feasibility and need, review the proposed regulation in a little bit more detail than Bill did, and discuss more particular the consistency with the plan of conservation and development. So as stated in Bill Mahalan's memo, the text amendment to create the special use district is really the first step. In order for a property owner to take advantage of a special use district, there are additional steps. So even if this is approved by the commission, it's just a regulation on the books. No property owner can go take advantage of it as a right or with a site plan approval. There needs to be additional steps. Most importantly, there needs to be the application of this zone over specific properties by this commission. So as Bill stated, when you're approving or reviewing a text amendment, you do so in your legislative capacity. An application to overlay this zone, special use district, over a property or properties is also done in your legislative capacity. So you have a very high level of discretion. So just to run through, if this text amendment were approved, then what's the next step? And the way it works, we would actually have to go to the wetlands commission and obtain wetlands approval for any development before coming back to you for the required special permit. So obviously, the wetlands looks at what they look at in terms of, you know, any impacts to the inland wetlands and the upland review area, stormwater, et cetera. If that is approved, only at that point do we come back for a two-fold application. The first is taking this zone, which hopefully is approved, overlaying it over properties, and at the same time, reviewing the site plan and reviewing a special permit application. So the mere implementation of this regulation doesn't approve anything, doesn't allow any developer to do anything without coming back to this board and getting that crucial overlay of the zoning district on specific properties.
Excuse me. I'm really sorry to interrupt. Chairman Thurlo, I have a question before we move further. Are we even permitted to move further? They seem like they have a location already in this handout, which we've never seen this before.
I just noticed it myself.
Yeah, but should it legally be in here? Because this--
The text amendment is for the whole town?
Understood.
We're not talking about any specific site.
Yeah, and I completely understand that, that if the commission wanted to, and we certainly don't need to, we could review a concept that this regulation would lead to. Not required. We can do it. It happens in a lot of instances in terms of text amendments, but if the commission doesn't want to, we certainly don't need to do that. We can stay on the big picture, which is fine.
I think that would be good tonight.
Okay.
And could we also strike this out of our packets that he gave us for purposes of in the packet?
Yes.
Justice--
I have no issue with that.
Thank you.
Give me, if you just give me one minute, I can strike it from the presentation as well.
Okay. Thank you.
This will take me a minute, so.
Maybe, Chairman Thurlo, maybe you'd like to tell everyone why what we're doing so that they know.
Well, I think I mentioned it before the meeting, but it's a text amendment that would apply to the whole town. It's not a specific building or site we're voting on tonight. If the commission decides to pass this, as the applicant just said, any developer would have to come back and apply to, you know, show us what they want to build and make an application for a special permit, a zone change, bring a site plan. This is a text amendment for a zone change. So that's what we're doing here tonight.
Ms. Chairman, I believe he was just using this as an example to show us how it would work.
Yes, I think--
That was the intent--
It's a fine line there. I think maybe we'd be more comfortable if we stuck to the big picture.
No problem.
Thank you.
I think part of the point I wanted to make regarding the permitting process was a number of, there are a number of criteria that come under not only overlaying the special use district over a certain piece of property, but also the site plan and special permit review, compliance with the regulations, density buffer, traffic consideration, consistency with neighboring properties. Those are all not for tonight. Those are for later on in a subsequent application. So why establish a new SU-EMC zone? Special use districts are a tool, another zoning tool, that have actually been used fairly extensively in Eastline. And part of the reason is special use districts allow the commission flexibility in their zoning regulations for, in particular, larger pieces of property. So I'm not sure the commission's aware, the public, but there are a number of special use districts kind of scattered throughout the town. I think almost all of them are in residential districts. There may be one that could be close to an industrial district. It's hard to tell what the original underlying zoning was, but most of them are in residential districts. And instead of changing the RU40 or a different residential zone and allowing uses in that for anybody to come, the special use district is a tool that provides more controls, like we have here in not only your SU districts, but also the proposed district. So that's why an SU district is beneficial. So this SU district differs a little bit from the other SU districts. Much of it is modeled the same. Much of the regulation, they kind of mirror each other to be consistent. It's proven, it's on the books, they work. So we tried to take advantage of as much of that as possible. As Bill Mahalan stated in his memo, the two other districts kind of allow fairly different, widely different things. The SU district allows kind of this schedule of commercial-type uses. The SUE district allows elderly housing, and in some instances, multifamily housing without any elderly component. What we're asking for this SU district, the SU-EMC district, is to allow for independent elderly housing, assisted living, memory care, convalescent-type facilities, plus medical offices and lodging for families. So those are the uses that are being proposed in this zone. One of the questions I would, I think would come to mind is, why can't you take advantage of one of the existing zones, one of the existing regulations that we have? And that's really what the answer is. This adds new uses to the SU portfolio. Like I said, independent elderly housing, assisted living, memory care, convalescent, medical offices. We conducted a feasibility study in 2022, and, you know, the general conclusion of the study was, the local supply of assisted living, memory care, independent living in these type of communities is limited, it's getting older, and there's really no new competition on the horizon. You have Crescent Point, you have the new, I think it's Atria in Waterford, and then you're over into Essex Meadows, Chester Village West, you're into Groton. And there's not a lot of units. Atria has 32 independent living units, 52 assisted living, 37 memory care. Crescent Point has no independent living units, 42 assisted living, and 37 memory care. And, you know, I think it's apparent that there's a need for this type of housing. There's aging population, and, you know, what we're trying to accomplish is having a development where 55 and over can go from independent living and then age in the same community. So that's what the goal is here. In terms of this specific section-- We already discussed to some extent the-- And I can pull up the regulation on the screen if you would like to do that. I didn't put it in the PowerPoint, but I can get to a different, I can get to a different screen. We already discussed some of the differences with the other SU zones, but I thought it was important to highlight a few here. Where the SU-EMC proposed on the books currently is the SUE, and on the books currently is the SU district. So again, uses are to some extent different. Elderly housing, assisted living, memory care, those types of things that we're asking for. Minimum acreage, you can see 30 acres, 10 acres, 75 acres. The SUE has, if you have 300 acres, you're allowed multifamily, taller heights and things like that. 50-foot height, 50-foot in the larger SUE district, 40 feet in the SU. The buffers are all the same, so vegetative buffers to keep the, if there are inconsistent uses, to keep them as buffered as possible. So for our regulation-- Let's see if I can actually manage to do this. Hold on. So our regulation is the new 12B. And again, I know Bill kind of went through a lot of the highlights, and obviously, we can answer questions, but I did have a few points that I wanted to highlight as well, not only for the commission but for the members of the public, so they can understand what we are trying to accomplish here. This form, if you look at the other, section 12, section 12A, the forms mirror each other. So it's just what's allowed and the different controls that are different. So what are the uses that are allowed? Like we talked about, elderly housing, medical offices, memory care facilities, assisted living. Those are the uses that we are trying to get permission to be able to potentially overlay onto a property. Then you get to the dimensional requirements. So this can't be overlaid on a property or a group of properties unless there's 30 acres. So this is large groups of property only. Somebody has 10 acres, they can't come in and try to build an assisted living facility or independent elderly housing facility. Setbacks, Bill discussed, 100 feet from the street line, 50 feet from any other property line with basically a 50-foot buffer. Coverage, the maximum coverage would be 20%. We talked about height, height up to 50 feet. If the buildings are taller than three stories, then they need to be screened by either natural vegetation, which provides screening, or topography. Any parking requirements would be in accordance with your regulations. The process, this application for rezoning, which is the map amendment overlaying the zone on a certain piece of property, would need to be accompanied with a specific site plan, special permit application, full engineering, chill parking, stormwater. So it's a fairly substantive-- So it's a fairly substantive requirement that we would need to prove to the commission that we met the provisions. There's a need for traffics, full traffic study to determine, okay, we want to put it on this piece of property, is this piece of property okay from a traffic perspective? What are the controls that are needed? This would all be thoroughly vetted at that later time. There needs to be on the property required areas, community areas for the individuals living there, whether it's independent living, assisted living, memory care for the individuals living there to be involved in passive active recreation. Has to be served by public water, sanitary sewer, all utilities underground. And then we get into the controls. You have a Section 25.5, which, as you know, for groupings of uses, there are, you know, kind of specific controls. These are basically what is in your regulations now with some minor exceptions, particularly in the second one. I think the assisted living facility is basically the same. Goes through the size of units, common areas required, parking requirements, transportation, daily transportation is required. This will help reduce the traffic concern. So, you know, there would need to be a shuttle to doctors, to community events, things like that. Assisted living and elderly housing comes with requirements regarding the age of the occupant. So that's all in here. Emergency call. There's specific density requirements to provide for maximum density. Sidewalks need to be provided. And then there's, again, open space. Open space is required. Percentage of open space would be required. In this instance, we're asking for 10%. And then there's the same type of concerns for the elderly housing, multifamily, multi-story, size of dwelling units, et cetera. We can answer any questions that you have, so I'm going to switch back. That's the end of the, yeah, that's it.
There's a, excuse me.
Yeah, sure.
Number 12, gross floor area minimum 20,000. Is there anywhere, there's a maximum?
I don't believe so, other than the coverage. There'd be, there's a coverage limitation of 20%, which imputes to a minimum gross floor area because the buildings can only be a certain size. And I think, I'll take a look. I don't believe there's a maximum gross floor area in your other SU sections. Or in the current 20, Section 25.5. That's on the books. Give me one minute. Yeah, this Sec. 12 actually comes directly from the assisted living facility in Section 25 dot 5. That's allowed in the CA zone, which is the only place that assisted living facilities are authorized in the town. And Section 12 is exactly the same. Minimum gross floor area for a building containing assisted living facility shall be 20,000 square feet. So we did take that from your existing regulation.
Are you ready for questions from the panel or?
Two minutes, a few minutes, I should say.
Thank you.
We also talked about consistency with the plan of conservation and development, which is a requirement of this commission to decide. And we did see, you know, we read the referral memo from the planning commission and viewed the meeting. And I think it's important to state off the bat, they really looked at it on a site-specific. They didn't look at it in the big picture, global perspective. As I said, their concern and the reason they documented in memo regarding inconsistency was that you would have commercial uses in a residential zone. And as I said originally, I think every single SU district is in a residential zone. SU allows full commercial uses. The reason it can be consistent is because the parcels are so large. So even though you have this island of SU district scattered throughout, because of the size and because of the buffers, it's not incompatible. Additionally, you know, in watching their meeting, there was actually discussion both ways, consistent and inconsistent. The consistent was economic development because this is a prime location, it's an available, you know, potentially available piece of property. But their concern was that if this special use zone text amendment is implemented, it will open up these uses to any property over 30 acres. We know that's not true. As we talked about, there's an extensive amount of work that needs to go to come back to this commission and say, we want it here on this property, and this is what we want it for, and you can say, no, very easily, full discretion, legislative discretion. So the concern that this will open up a can of worms, in my opinion, isn't appropriate. And they also had concerns over environmental impacts from this. And again, when you think about environmental impacts, that's a very site-specific thing. How is this, this text amendment isn't going to environmentally impact anything. It's going to give developers an opportunity to take a look at a piece of property and say, okay, what are the needed uses? Independent living, assisted living, memory care, where somebody can move in and be there for the rest of their lives comfortably, right? That's the goal, especially with the aging population. So that's the question from a plan of conservation and development perspective is, is this type of development something that's consistent? And we believe it is. The plan of conservation and development has a number of principles of smart growth, they call it. So offering diverse housing options, these are very diverse housing options, promoting mixed land uses. Again, it's all under the same umbrella, right? Medical offices, independent living, assisted living, memory care, but those are mixed land uses. Walkability, the regulation, Section 12B, like I said, requires internal sidewalks, it requires areas for active and passive recreation. And then economic development. So this, the type of development that's contemplated by this regulation change would be a substantial economic benefit to the town because you have, it would increase the tax base substantially without a lot of burden on services. 55 and over and onsite medical type facility potentially. So, you know, there would be, this could have a very, very positive effect on the tax base. The deep referral, I believe, is also a site-specific concern of theirs. You know, they talk about this commission on a CAM perspective, Coastal Management Act, needs to make sure that any development, particularly of a higher level density, isn't going to be located in a flood zone. And I think their main concern, when I read that letter, is that also isn't going to be choked off by flooded areas, right? So that's something that you can't, you can only evaluate when you're looking at a specific site. And that's what's appropriate under the CAM Act, is to look at that on a specific site. So at this point, I think I would entertain any questions that you have.
I have one. Why do you think you require 50 feet of height? That's awfully tall.
Well, it's, yeah, it's density is, you know, 30 acres sounds big, and it is in a lot of instances. But obviously, in order to accommodate any development, there needs to be a specific density from a developer perspective as to whether or not it makes sense financially. So again, 50 feet is something that's authorized in these special use districts. So that's all we're asking for is what, we're not trying to break any new ground here, but it's basically a fourth story. So fourth story means better density for the developer.
That's going to be my question.
Oh, sorry about that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You made, if I understood you correctly, you said that environmentally, this text amendment change would not really affect East Line. How do you, how do you, what's your feeling on that? What are you basing that upon?
Well, we don't know, right? Because it's, that question couldn't be answered until there was a certain site chosen and there was a development planned for the site. Only then could we evaluate whether there was going to be an environmental impact. So again, this, this regulation, proposed regulation, is just a tool. That's all it is. It's a tool to allow for larger pieces of property to be used for what we believe are much-needed uses in this town.
But you are targeting properties of 30 acres, which there's a lot of properties of 30 acres plus in town. So if we allow this zone change to allow your project to go through, that means everybody else in town could do projects all over creation.
If the commission approved it, which, again, the, the commission has two different authorities. Your normal site plan and special permit authority is limited compared to your legislative authority when you're overlaying, when you're doing a text amendment like we're doing tonight, or when you're overlaying a map change. This requires a map change, Phase 2. Because if we wanted to do a 30-acre parcel that you didn't think was appropriate, you could say, no, even if the development met every single one of the regulations and had no environmental impacts. You have that much discretion because of that map change, which is required as part of any development.
Other than building height, what is the major differences between this proposed amendment and Section 12A?
The SUE?
Yes.
SUE only allows elderly housing.
Okay.
So elderly housing is only one component of what we believe is appropriate and needed. Elderly housing, 55 and over housing, but it doesn't allow assisted living, doesn't allow memory care, doesn't allow medical offices. So it doesn't allow the, kind of, the whole portfolio of uses. And, you know, with one big caveat, which is 12A, if you have 300 acres, allows multifamily. So anybody could live there. There's no 55 and over cap if you have 300 acres. So that's obviously unique, unique properties. So that's why 12A, the SUE zone, we don't believe works.
Do you find, with the floating zones, do you find that there's potential for private interest over public interest to be an issue?
Hold on, I'm going to stop sharing my screen for a second here. I mean, that's a hard question to answer because zoning, and I could talk about this for a while, but I'm not going to. You know, zoning is an interesting concept because it's basically the government telling people what they can do on their land, right? So it kind of goes against private property rights. So all, all development is private, not all development, most development is private interest. So the role of zoning is to do exactly that, balance private interests with public concern. That's why we're here, and that's why zoning is frankly authorized, because you have the ability to say no, say modify that, put in additional controls to make sure it's not going to have an impact. But you all know, sitting on zoning, what people want to do is develop their land, and a lot of times it's to maximize what they can do on it.
So in your opinion, do you think that with this floating zone change, does it have the potential for failed projects if they're not carefully managed?
Of course, any, any project could fail if it's not properly managed, so.
The kind of facility that you're talking about putting in, it talks about medical offices, does that include ambulances and what kind of noise are we talking about?
I think we all know what an ambulance sounds like when its sirens are going off. So that, you know, that's, that's what the noise would be if needed. But, you know, the, part of, part of the concept is the assisted living and the memory care connect, could be connected to medical offices. So you would be eliminating need for ambulances. Obviously, if something happens to somebody and they need to go to a higher level facility, an ambulance could be required for that. But, you know, that's applicable in any development, including single-family homes.
Any other questions before we ask the public?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's now open for public comments. A couple things, please keep your comments to under three minutes since we seem to have a crowd tonight. The other thing, we asked the presentation to stay just to the text amendment, not to get site-specific, so we're not entertaining any comments specific to a specific site. But if you have comments in general about this floating zone, feel free to come up. Yes, sir.
John Vilcek for Meadow Street, Niantic. I have to admit, I'm a member of the Illinois Water Commission, ultimate. I'm also the Fair Rent Commission Chairperson. So having said that, that has nothing to do with what I'm going to say.
Okay.
And I realize that we can't talk much about the specific plans, and we know what those plans are because they were presented to this commission last year. But I recall, I hope you recall, there was a gentleman sitting in the front row about, I don't know, six, seven, nine months ago, who used the term behemoth in speaking about buildings on Main Street, zoning for those buildings on Main Street. And I'd like to resurrect behemoth for properties over 30 acres. What's being asked for here is a blanket permission to whatever a builder wants to do to build in our town. This is a small town. We don't need hospitals. We have hospitals nearby. We have facilities nearby for seniors. And I hopefully present to you, consider this zoning change as something that would taint the town and something that taint the town, and something that would be negative, and allow interlopers to come into our town and do whatever they damn well please to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am, come on up. Or sir, I'm sorry. I only saw the top of your head.
My name is Bruce Ehlum, on Cold Drive. And I heard the discussion about traffic that's taken into consideration. But is also, when that is taken in consideration, does that, does that looked at with the visitors to this thing? Because what is 400-something rooms, if only a fourth of people come to visit, that's still over 100 cars on the streets out here. So is that taken, visitation taken into the traffic?
This is a time just for comments, but of course, we look at everything, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
My name's Don Danila, D-A-N-I-L-A, 24 Patagansett Drive. I'm a member of the Eastline Commission for the Conservation and Natural Resources, but I'm speaking for myself. I'd like, first of all, I'd like to say I concur with the letter presented from the Eastline Planning Commission, that this text amendment change is inconsistent with the Eastline Plan of Conservation Development. It was said several times here, Mr. Mahalan, Connecticut Deep Letter, noting that this text amendment would not be site-specific. And that is the issue here. If we make a change towards zoning regulations, that opens up a lot of, and in fact, I think someone else used the word can of worms. We've seen with other laws, ostensibly that having regulations that have ostensibly good purposes can lead to big issues. For example, the agricultural exemption to our inland wetlands provisions have allowed an extensive amount of clear-cutting to go on in Oswego Hills. We've seen a number of developments in this town that come in under the 830G affordable housing, whereby developers have used this issue, and it's a necessary issue to have affordable housing, but they've gotten away with a lot of other things in their developments that maybe should not have happened. I think by allowing this to go forward, and it's been brought up, I think, by your commissioners, you're going to have to entertain any application that fits in here. Anybody with a 30-acre parcel or larger wants to come in. And I don't know if this will snowball or not, but it certainly will open up doors. And you're going to be in a tough position if you allow some to go through. How are you going to deny others? And again, I agree with other speakers here tonight. We want to have a town with a very mixed sort of development and not be overdeveloped. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
So Mark Gwin, I live at 21 Lakeview Heights. Gwin, G-U-I-N-N. I guess my concern is the opening it to the commercial activities, right? So I get the assisted living, I get the elderly housing, the medical offices, which is very vague, are those open to the public? Are they not open to the public? We have ambulance services thrown in here. We have a lot of commercial uses that we're now going to throw into residential areas. That's a little different than elderly housing and housing, and need-based housing. So I think that, to me, is a big question. That brings a lot of noise pollution, potential light pollution, a lot of additional traffic. So you talk about visitors, we're not talking about medical offices, who now, I don't know if those are open or closed. So, you know, if it's closed, and that should be in the text as well, that we would allow this for medical support of the assisted living facility, not medical offices as Joe Blow down the street, right? So that, right now, is very vague in the text regulation that they're talking about. So I think this mixed use to commercial is the most concerning part to me. I, I get that we need the elderly housing and the assisted living housing. I don't see that extending to the medical and ambulance services and all the other things, unless they're closed to the community, and maybe there's some justification for that.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight? Yes, ma'am?
Chris Lambert, 10 Cove Hill Road, Niantic. I guess my basic question is, what I'm hearing in this description is what they now, I think, refer to as continuing care, adult, an adult continuing care community, which does, in places like Stone Ridge, Masonicare, include all of that. They have independent living, they have assisted living, they have memory care, and they provide the medical coverage that is needed for those residents. So that's the clarification I'm looking for. Is that what they're, they're proposing here? I'm not saying one way or the other that's not needed, but I would like clarification. Thank you.
After the public has spoken, we'll ask the applicant to answer any questions. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Emily Phillips Geeza, that's P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S-g-e-e-z-a. I live at 15 Lakeview Heights. My comment is that, as a resident of the town, as a taxpayer and a landowner, Bank really owns my property, I consider myself a steward of the land that I live on, and a steward of the land in our town. And my comment is that I would like some more investigation on the environmental impact on any of these proposals, as where I sit in my backyard and witness the biodiversity, and work really hard to preserve that biodiversity, also facing the property, one of the proposed locations of development, which includes wetlands, meadow, and forested land. So that is my request and comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Kim Cameron, 21 Lakeview Heights. These continuing care facilities, or developments, I should say, I'd like to better understand, and maybe the board can research this, that, in my view, they're typically in, on the outskirts of town, because they're big, huge communities with the medical services, et cetera, not smack in the middle of an RU-40 area. So what other examples can we provide that do this type of thing, with these types of facilities?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike Serpe, S-E-R-P-E. I live adjacent to the proposed property. Yes, it's a, a, Lakeview Heights.
We're not talking about any specific sites tonight. Just officially...
I think this board needs to realize the precedent that it can set or not set in regards to this town. The town plan took a lot of thought to put together, and the reason we have this congenial great town atmosphere down here is because we followed that plan, and it was a master plan, okay? So now we're being asked to use a loophole, that is the medical side of it, to allow a massive development by a company that's out of Long Island. This type of development basically vacuums money out of our town into Long Island. The money is not going to stay here. Even if our residents, who are getting older, would sell their home in order to maybe downsize into one of these units, that money then goes out of our area. And that's a poor economic choice to make in the management of any town. The scale of this development is absolutely massive. The environmental impact around Dodge Pond, which drains out into the estuary, okay, I'm going to finish up, is something that requires a serious EIR, or it's going to bring about a lot of lawsuits, including those from neighbors. I think that the town has spoken over the last year, and has come to the sewer meeting, where they were bullied into what happened. And it's quite obvious that the residents of this village and this town are against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, yes, ma'am? In the pink, yes.
My name's Maria Moulthrup, 71 Cory Dock Road, Niantic, Connecticut. And you did a great presentation, but I, my question is, you had some things with the Planning Commission, that you had questions on what they were saying and how they came up with their decision. Did you think about going back to the planning decision, Planning Commission, and meeting with them?
Thank you. Anyone else from the public tonight? Yes, sir?
My name is Dan Sheer. My wife and I live at 12 Lake Avenue Extension, and our backyard is Dodge Pond.
Let's, let's try to keep it general, not site-specific. Thank you.
I would hope that the commission would consider, as many people have brought up the environmental issue, that there are just so much wildlife that is abundant in that area, and I'm sure other areas of Eastline, that this should be considered, anytime there's a proposal like this, to overlay that kind of a new regulation.
Thank you.
I, I hope that everyone understands that on the application, this isn't for anything on Dodge Pond. So, so that is why I specifically asked that this be struck from the record, because this, that is a Dodge Pond thing, that, that's not what we're discussing. It's, it's not what the application's about, just so you know, that we're not trying to skirt anything, because we're definitely not.
Would the applicant like to answer any of the points that came up from the public?
I think, you know, we, there's been a lot of discussion about environmental impacts, and as I stated, if this text amendment is approved, there are multiple steps after the text amendment. Number one, inland wetlands review for any property is going to be substantially concerned with making sure that there are no environmental impacts. And then, number two, coming back to this commission for, as we discussed, map overlay and special permit. So there's, there's going to be a lot of time to talk about how a development gets laid out, and what type of impacts it would have. From the specific use perspective, and, you know, allowing commercial uses in residential zones, if the, this SU zone is overlaid into a residential zone, one thing of note, convalescent homes are allowed in RU-40. So part of, part of the, one of the, one of the things that we're asking for is already allowed by special permit in RU-40. And back to the big picture, this commission has a very broad discretion to define, you know, what is the medical office? Who can take advantage of it? What's the extent of the ambulance services? We would need to come to you with a statement of use, which you're familiar with, which outlines exactly what is being proposed and how it is being proposed. Those are next step, you know, those are, those are for the next step. So, you know, we would have discussions with the commission about those exact things, because that would impact traffic. Having medical offices open to the public, or, you know, limited to residents, these are all things that would be discussed at a high level at, at any subsequent zoning. The purpose, right now, that we're asking for is, this regulation will allow the continuing care communities, like we're talking about, to be here and thrive and serve the residents of this town. So that, that's what we're asking for. And I think, I think that summed up a, a lot of what we, a lot of what we talked about.
Any other commissioner have a question at this point, before we have a motion to close the hearing?
I think, if I can just say one thing, you know, there are, if there, if the commission has, we've heard a few things, right? We've heard questions about height, we've heard questions, you know, if there are specific questions, or requests for modifications, we would prefer to discuss those on the record with you, if you wanted to ask us to make, you know, would you be willing to make this change or that change? Once you close the public hearing, we can't participate in that.
Yes, I know. So, again, are there any more questions from the commission, or would you like to close the hearing?
I have a question. One of our, you know, residential development regulations that were written seven, eight years ago, there's a requirement of 100-foot buffer from a water course or wetlands. Is that something that you could live with, with this proposal?
Could you, where is that in the regs? Do you know?
Yeah, Norm. Conservation by design. Page 174.
I just want to see, I just want to see the wording of it.
What'd you say, Norm? Page 174?
174.
That was written to preserve views of the neighborhood aesthetics.
Yeah. I'm getting there, hold on one moment, please.
Do you want me to read it?
Okay. Oh, that, and that's in your site plan requirements?
Yes.
Okay. What section, I'm, I'm, I'm in this, I just need to look to see what section it was. What's the number?
Section 23, page 174.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my PDF page instead of the number page.
Well, if it's in the site plan requirements, this amendment would not change that, or...
It isn't, I, I missed, I was looking at the PDF page number, not the, yeah, it's in the conservation, design, development, because that was going to be my point. And I'm sorry, what number was it? 23 dot?
23 dot 1 through 23.5.
Yeah, it says it right on there, 100 feet.
Yeah, building setback to wetlands and water courses, yeah. We wouldn't object to building setback of 100 feet to wetlands and water courses.
But if this, if this was approved, then every person that would come after you would have to do the same thing. This, you know what, you know what I'm saying? It would, maybe that next person, because this would wipe it out, wouldn't it? The 100 feet, or no? No, okay. Never mind.
Yeah, I mean, you know, wetlands has an upland review area as well, so on large, I think part of the, you know, you're only talking about large pieces of property here. So in order to satisfy those environmental concerns, pushing things away from inland wetlands and water courses makes sense. So we wouldn't object to that. And I will, I will make a comment, too, because it, it came up. You know, from a height perspective, you asked a question about the 50-feet in height. The zone, as drafted, has other controls, like we talked about, coverage is a major control, right? Because it minimizes the spread of a development. But if the commission said max 40 feet, you know, you have that ability to do that.
Any other questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay, we'll move on to our regular meeting. Yes, it's the application of Edward M. Casella, Attorney for Palteer, Niantic, Connecticut, LLC, for a proposed text amendment to include new Section 12B, SU-EMC, a floating special use district of the Eastline zoning regulations. We can discuss and vote tonight. We can take the application home and study it and vote at the next meeting. It's up to the commission. It's up to the commission.
I'm prepared to vote tonight.
How do you all feel?
I'll vote tonight. I think, you know, we have a showing from...
Could we shut the, I'm sorry, could we shut that door, or?
I think it's been demonstrated tonight that this proposed amendment is inconsistent with the plan of development. I don't, I don't like the height issue, but it's also inconsistent with what our citizenry wants for our town, so I'm inclined to be not in favor of it.
I'm agreeing with Denise. I think this opens up a whole can of worms for a lot of other parcels in town, so I'm against it.
Ms. Jaha?
Yeah, I'm against it for a lot of reasons, actually. The floating zone process is not an easy process to navigate. It does have, you know, there's pros and cons for anything, but the reduced predictability is a concern. Potential for private interest over public interest is a huge concern. Increased complexity is a concern. Potential for failed projects, if not carefully managed. And it affects, it can harm surrounding areas and homeowners. There's a lot of homeowner challenges that would come with something of this text amendment change. And then to throw in the environmental aspects of this, this request for this application for this zone change, there's a lot of what-ifs there. And we live on a coastal community, and we have to do everything we can do to protect it, and that's my opinion.
Mr. Foley?
I'll be in the minority. I'm getting used to this. I find it, we're always so bound by our own regulations that we have very little discretion to decide anything. We end up in here arguing about trivia, but whether a project actually gets built or not is beyond our ken, because the regulations are so, are so monolithic and binding. This strikes me as giving us at least the opportunity to look at an application and decide if it's a good idea, rather than just nipping it in the bud and saying, no, we can't because the rules say so. So, I mean, I can see which way this going is going, but I would be in favor of approving this, this text amendment, to at least give us the opportunity to look at an application and see if it's a good idea, rather than just, rather than just killing it prenatal, if you will.
Can't we still look at an application if it comes in front of us?
Not for a floating...
Right, not for the floating, no, I know that, but for any other thing that wants to, any other applicant that wants to come forward.
Mr. Peck?
To address Mr. Foley's comment, I would hate to approve this and then have all the money and resources spent on presenting an application, and that's significant, and then get it turned, turned down. That being said, my other comment is, if, if we were to approve this, I would highly recommend that, or if we are hesitant about deciding tonight, I think we ought to consider some refinements to the bulk rates. For example, that was mentioned, 40-feet height instead of 50, 100-foot buffer around a water course instead of 50. But the biggest thing, to me, is what the public has said over the course of the last, especially the last five years. A survey was done prior to the publication of our Plan of Conservation and Development, and townspeople overwhelmingly said it was very apparent that we are overdeveloping the town. That keeps ringing in my head, and for that reason, I'm tending towards not approving this.
I've been on the fence about this. I agree with Mr. Foley that it keeps it open to see applications of this sort. But again, I don't think our town could stomach any kind of development this big right now, even though I think it would probably be successful. We do already have a zone for elderly housing. I'm on the fence, but I'm leaning no.
Can we take a vote, then?
If someone makes a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to deny application of Edward Casella, Attorney for Pelletier, Niantic, Connecticut, LLC, for proposed text amendment to create new section 12B, SU-EMC, a floating special use district with additional controls in section 25.5 of the Eastline zoning regulations.
We have a second? All those in...
Excuse me? Comment? One last comment. This property will be developed.
We're not talking site-specific for the text amendment.
You're right.
Sorry. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, I made, I did a motion to deny.
So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
The motion passed to deny, five to one. Moving on, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The minutes are approved, 6:00. We can wait a minute, tell people when. We don't have any old business. I don't believe we have any subcommittee reports. Coming up for new business, we'll be having outdoor dining room meals coming up. A few of them need amendments this year because they're asking for strings of lights, so Mr. Mahalan will schedule those. Also, we have coming up the application of William R. Sweeney, Esquire, Agent for the Sehun Development Group, LLC, for a proposed text amendment to sections 9.2.1, 9.3.1, and 25.5, to permit mixed-use development in the CB zone, subject to a special permit and certain minimum controls. And I believe Mr. Mahalan will schedule this. Does the commission, as a whole, have anything they want to discuss tonight?
No.
Okay, we did not have any respondents. We do have public delegations, so if people would like to speak on land use issues that were not on the agenda tonight. No? Okay. Mr. Mahalan cannot be here tonight. We don't have an ex officio. Ms. Makavitz, did you go to the plan?
I sure did.
Oh, good.
At the Planning Commission, they received an application from Kristen Clark, English Harbor, for a subdivision of Holmes Road, reworking of a past submission. Attorney Garrity explained how 830-G works. They gave us basically, then, the same talk he gave us about, and there were many people from the public to express their opposition. They also had an application of Stephen Harley, Portside Holdings, English Harbor Capital Partner, for a three-lot subdivision on a six-acre parcel on Heritage Road. The discussion will be continued on that to get more clarification on some issues. Zoning referrals, application of Edward Casella, who was here tonight, so we all know that they believe that that was inconsistent. And they also let the commission know that we would be dealing with a lot of issues concerning outdoor dining, and that was it.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Peck, will you be attending the April 8th?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I only have a couple of things tonight. I did get the information about our vote on the 830-G moratorium to our first selectman. I understand he wants to have the support, even though it's his decision and he's the only one that can make the request, he wants to have the support of the Board of Selectmen. So actually, I talked to Ms. Chakalo, who's a deputy on the Board of Selectmen, and she is making sure it gets on their agenda, and she was going to see if Attorney Blistdale could come answer any questions that they might have. So that's where that is.
Thank you.
Also, Jessica, you were going to give us an update on the training. I know we had canceled March 22nd.
Yes, everybody up there is all set. So they changed it where you have to leave once every four years for the training, and it's only term, unless your term is longer than yours. So all of you guys are set until your next term.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? If not, we can move to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.